...order for Thursday, August 22nd. We met two weeks ago and we have some minutes, gentlemen. All three members of the President, the Recording Secretary. Mr. Fred Mullen is recording for the citizens who can't be in attendance.
I'm sure.
I'm sure. What did I say?
You said the Recording Secretary.
Oh, the Recording Secretary's not here.
She is right now.
I'll make a motion to approve the 6:30 non-public sealed minutes of August 8th, 2019.
Okay, 6:30.
Second.
Yeah, I did the one. Yep, okay. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, and I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of the August 8th, 2019 as amended.
Can you guys get those all signed up, send them over here for her, okay?
Okay.
I made a motion for the regular. Just take a second.
I'll second. Any further discussion on the regular minutes?
Nope.
As amended, correct, Bob?
Yep.
Correct. It's supposed to be a little like here or like.
I know.
And I'll make the final motion to approve the 7:45 PM non-public sealed minutes of August 8th, 2019.
I'll second that. Are there any discussions on those minutes? For the non-public minutes, for the jet, both of them are going to be sealed, gentlemen, because we had the project information. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll go back to Jennifer Mike.
Yes.
For her.
Bob signed it. I think he did, yeah.
No, I didn't sign that one.
Okay. All right, a little bit of public comment. I'll start the first roll. No? You're on the agenda, sir.
No, thank you, yes.
I'm on the agenda.
Yes, you are. We want to talk about some of the estate.
Yeah, give me an update on all the bonds.
Yes.
But if you want to filibuster, you know this.
No, I don't want to filibuster. Patriots are playing.
I'll close a public comment. We have a secretary coming in, so I'll stand by for a minute, but I can go through. First of all, we got some ender fees. Lee, are you in a receipt of $225 for the Old Home Day event?
We are.
Okay. I'd like to start off by, before we make a motion on that one, I'd give kudos to the entire committee that worked on the Old Home Day. It was an outstanding success. The weather was great, the attendance was great, the ice cream was extra great, the servers were extra great serving the ice cream today. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that. It's not one of the strawberries.
Yes, I like the strawberry, okay.
The hot strawberry?
Yeah, some of the hot strawberry.
It gives me an odd strawberry. Like, nobody wants it hot, Mike.
Well, I was trying to, I was advertising, if you choose strawberry, you get an extra scoop. And the thing is, I still kind of push it. I was trying to push it.
I made it just before it melted.
But overall, it was a great day, and I think, I thought the committee did a great job. And I saw a lot of, a lot of people were very pleased with the agreement. Okay, so we do have some donation and vendor fees of $225, so per RSA 31,95-B, Roman number three, paragraph B. I accept the donation and vendor fees of $225 for the Old Home Day event.
I'll second Mike's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Lee, you have that.
Mine goes back.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion per RSA 31,95-B, Roman number three, paragraph B, to accept the donation in the amount of $90 for Reese across Dunbar.
I'll second that.
Dunbar.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Are you going to be seeing the?
I am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Clem, if you could come on up and chat with us.
You bet. I'm Madden, Warthackney Road. I'm here on the Town Hall Restoration Project. Thank you for being on the agenda. We've had a couple bits of progress. We've got a good committee. We've had the concert series. You guys probably know about that. We had about 20 people walk upstairs and ask for a tour last Old Home Day, which was really nice, I thought.
You have donations?
There were some donations, I don't know if anybody other than me put in some money, but there were.
Yeah, I think there was 60 people overall that came in the doorway there that we had. Because when I was, when I was here, just before tour, it was 52 people.
Wow.
I thought that was closer to 100, according to.
That went on a tour?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I left early, so.
Yeah.
When I left.
But it was well received. At the end of the day, they said it was a success.
Thank you. Well, that's fantastic. But that, so that committee, so you know, I'm also on the nonprofit. That is the 501(c)(3) that raises money that is, we're putting towards there. So the committee's got a lot of great stuff going on. We have Kurt McDermott and Beth Boucher doing the concert series. A lot of people do John Stevens, you know, is doing a lot of work and trying to figure out what's going on. So we're at the stage where we have, you know, from the project from three or four years ago, where we hired an architect. He did a lot of work on the building and got it all schemed out and all that other stuff. So the nonprofit has money that they would like to put towards the design process. So we need to make sure that you would be interested as the, you know, owners of the building, or the representatives of the owners of the building. And if we engage an architect, or you allowed us to engage an architect on your behalf, that you'd accept that gift. And that's probably about $30,000. And so it's something, you know, because the nonprofit has, has raised well over $100,000. I think we're getting, we spent a lot of money on.
Initial.
On the initial studies and then on the architect stuff from the last time. We saw a lot of feedback from people about how the best accomplished getting up there. And I know you guys, you know, are kind of kicking things around, and we all got to kind of get on something, but we think we need to.
Get some plans.
Get some plans or kind of get some ideas down on paper and, you know, without getting the town to pay for it, this is what the nonprofit's for, but we can't spend money on a building that the selectmen own without either your blessing or you accepting the gift or anything like that. And one concern is, is that there is a three bid over $10,000. We've already engaged an architect previously, Dennis Myers, who is really good to work with, knows the building well, knows the project, and so.
Which is going to save you money because he's not starting from scratch again.
Right.
Because we have a whole building description and layout.
Right.
And so he's familiar with all the building and he's familiar with it architecturally and structurally, so.
Correct.
I would think that that's a good idea to stick with the same guy.
What's, again, you had plans initially and.
It was bigger, Mike.
Right, so are you scoping it down a little bit, you think?
Yeah, I mean, well, everybody wants to scope it down, but it's almost, it's.
How do you get public buy-in?
You can get, you can get it down to basically a, something, an addition that would just house a stairway and a little park. But the problem that we're going to, I think we're coming up on now is the building codes are changing and bathroom requirements for assembly spaces are going to go up, which means we might have to have a bigger addition regardless. But that's all stuff that we need to figure out further down. But it's just something that, you know, I just heard about last weekend, and I think there is a new building code coming through that's being adopted where assembly spaces, instead of having two, we require five or something along those lines. But that's all things. Well, yes, we're trying to scale it down, but the real, we want, we can't, you know, we can't get renderings or any renderings that we think we could present unless we hire somebody to do that.
Sure. Not just that, I think having him line up, especially to meet all the codes that are required with a building like this now. Because, you know, we get some of the codes from the fire department, some of the public safety codes, but they're only put together by one person, the architect, so I think that's important to get all that answered.
Yeah, we, I mean, we got to have a professional who has a license and has a stamp that before we go spending money or anything, don't worry about the problem after it's built that we didn't meet the right code.
Can I speak on that? The amount that he's mentioning is going to require a public hearing, so you want to make sure you give me enough time to put it in the paper.
Yeah, oh, yeah. This isn't going to happen.
And then go through the 14-day notice. Oh, yeah.
It's not going to happen immediately, but we're more here whether to see, or I'm more here on behalf of the nonprofit to ask whether you would support us doing that.
I think.
Because we don't want to get our wheels spinning and then come in and say, hey, you got a lot of this.
I think this board is fully in our board by this.
Because you look at changes that you are thinking of doing, which you haven't even made an architect aware of, and say, the lift portion elevated to the lift, and there's other things that you've looked at. So, you know, probably is a good idea to get some conceptual design.
Yeah.
Addressing the codes. So, you know, everybody knows the direction we're going in. Right now, we're kind of floundering.
Not yet. We're, I mean, I don't want to use the word floundering, but we don't really have a direction. I mean, we know what we want to do is to get up to the second floor.
Make it a usable space.
Right, which requires a lot, which requires a lot of sprinkler and, you know, the ADA accessibility and the fire regress and the electric and the fire alarm. There's a lot in the power, everything that's got to go into that. But I don't think we're able to get around the fact that we need an addition, and we got to make sure that addition is going to meet everything, all the other stuff. So we're not, you know, just going to throw money at it without making it official, but we don't want to engage somebody or even begin to.
Turn down at this stage.
Get a proposal about something without saying, hey, would you want us to do this or forget it? Don't spend the next five years on it.
Have you talked to Dennis Myers about the reduced size of that?
We, we got some very early sketches from him, probably about nine to 12 months ago when we started, you know, the committee started really going after it. And he has a way to make it tiny.
A small footprint, yeah.
Very small footprint. But those were just, you know, pan paper in the back of an envelope type thing, and that's what, it's, it's not, you know. Sorry, it takes expensive and we don't really want to have him do a lot of stuff without paying him for it. So, and he's happened, the thing about Dennis is, he knows the project, he knows that, and he, you know, he's an architect, so he thinks spatial very well.
But, you know, looking back at history, I think the time when the project was first proposed, the economy was in dire straits. And that was one factor going against spending, create the bond, spend all those dollars. And I, I think now that the economy's improved a little bit, you're looking at scaling it down a little bit, I think it's, almost you have to make it a saleable project, make it appealable to the public. And I think it's, and you have to package it correctly, and I think that engages the architect. And I agree with Bob in debut.
Yeah, definitely. We, I mean, it has to be, I think, it has to be something that.
Yeah, I think, I think we're in consensus of supporting you, but this is one board. Remember, the board changes over all the time.
Right.
And.
Okay, well.
Dave's up for election, there's coming, we could get a new member, unless you vote for him.
Do you think that's electioneering?
Okay. If that was electioneering, I, I take it back, but I think it's.
Sorry about that, Dave.
We did a public meeting.
Well, that would, that would be great.
But the thing is, that's a risk, that's a risk.
No, it is, I mean, all the times, I mean, if we were going to do it, you know, we raised a lot of money, but we would need to bond it. And that's, that's a very high threshold, 66 and 2/30% of the electorate that votes on that day.
Exactly.
So it's not, I mean, it's not, it's no given, but we don't want to spend money on something that's not even going to be something.
But still, it's, it's a building that's right, we look at it every day and it says, not happening.
It works. I think it's worth money. And the problem is, the economy may not have been so good back then. Construction prices were really nice, so we're probably going to have to build it for voices watch, maybe.
That's life.
That's life.
Is there a meeting scheduled next week, right?
We, yes, I think it's the third Tuesday about every month.
Third Tuesday?
So I think, yeah. And I can go back and say, all right, they'll do it, then we'll get a package together and bring it in in an official capacity and try to, we'll get some real arduous, because it's not, I mean, the job of, the job, the role of the nonprofit is to get to that second floor. And if you can spend money on an architect that gets us something that is, you know, to go to, and the town doesn't have to spend money on it, everybody else.
Now, just sticking out loud here, will we have a preliminary budget from the architect when we have that public meeting or not?
I, yeah, I don't know how much the architects these days, and they might give you a range, but I don't think they're going to give you a breakout, you know, provisions and all that.
I didn't know if you would have a cap or some, some idea, so when we go to that split room.
He knows that we don't want gold plate doors, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, no, just toilets, right?
Just toilets, yeah.
But it's, it's, I, I don't, Dennis, I think Dennis would know well kind of what the costs are, but I think he would be shy to put anything on it because it still would have to go through a bid process. But I think, I think that's further down the road, like years off.
And he understands the constraints we're under at this time compared to last time.
Yeah, no, he, I mean, he understood it last time, too. I don't think our construction management company understood it, you know. They're the ones that put the numbers on it, that the bond was geared towards.
Now, I'm going to ask something else. The fact that you went through the bid process previously and you already selected an architect, and now we have an architect with building knowledge there to work on, do you have to re-select because you're changing your design? Do you have to put that out to bid is what I'm asking, because you've already done that process?
Yeah, well, they're acting under a 501(c)(3), do they have to follow the selectmen's policy?
They might not have to, that's what I'm trying to say.
Right.
They're a nonprofit.
So if it's under a nonprofit, they still have to have a public hearing now?
Yeah, because you're still accepting money.
We're accepting money.
Just like this.
Why don't we, why don't we look into that question? Because I hate to put a bunch of people through a bid process when we already have somebody with all the knowledge of the building, and realistically, we're probably not going to pick the other people.
Can you be useful?
Yeah, I, I think the nonprofit would prefer to stick with Dennis.
Right, so I'm thinking if we can, if we can try and have Lee look into that, and if we don't have to spin two other architects' wheels, because we're, we're going to pick the guy with most experience on our building most likely.
Yeah, we have, last time we did it, I think we had six or seven architects put in bids. Dennis was the one that really, you know.
But we can, we can just run that question by.
So what you're really asking is the architect design. Right now, you have one that you were happy.
We have a building with an architect design on it, and we're altering that. And if that alters a, you know, that altering of that original design.
I think, you know, the last time we did it, the town had the contract with Dennis, and we paid the town the money that went to the architect.
Which is probably what's going to happen again.
Right.
But it's over a certain threshold.
I, I mean, I don't think the nonprofit, the nonprofit, the town committee used to have an authority from the selectmen to act on the behalf or to, you know, gather proposals and things like that. But I don't think that's the case anymore with the town committee, and I know it's not the case with the nonprofit.
That's correct.
We're not invested to act on the behalf of the town.
They act on their own, and when they're ready, they come to the board and give you a proposal.
Right.
Whether you choose to.
So I guess, why don't we check that question for us, if we're going to be the ones acting on it?
It would conceivably be the same scope of work as a Town Hall Restoration Project.
And we already got an architect working on it, and this is going to be an extension of that work.
Contract, yeah, I think you guys, it's up to you guys, you know.
We're just here to.
We're just going to throw money at you and, you know.
Well, there's two ways to do it. Either you're throwing money at it to get that, which we could exceed the amount of money you contribute, or you can throw the plans at us that are paid for through the nonprofit.
That's why I, that's why I thought.
That's just something to think about.
That's why I thought he was doing.
If you're going to throw the plans at us and we can accept the plans for the building, that's one thing.
I think the same thing, the money spent out of there have to go through the town, like we do for the odd day, so it's still going to have to go through those.
Not really. If they were contributing money to the town, I think we'd have to accept the money.
Yeah.
But then if it goes beyond the cost of that money, we can't go back to them and say, hey.
No, no, no.
We don't, we're not, so we wouldn't be contracting anything other than design. Dennis has already been in the building, doesn't need to go back in the building. We wouldn't be contracting the town to any obligation at all. We'd just be the design.
I think what I'm hearing him say is that he's going to work with this, the past engineer. He's architect, he's going to give him a set, a quote price, and the combined, I'll do this work for this price is what they're going to give us money for, correct?
But what you're not hearing is, he's not going to get a capped price, he doesn't believe so.
We might, we can get a, we can get a proposal from Dennis, you know.
For the work to be done.
Yeah.
And for the design.
For a schematic set of plans that somebody could probably price on. It wouldn't be bid ready, you know, like you're going to throw out for a GC bid.
A preliminary, so.
Yeah, something that would show elevations, you know, where all the bathrooms would go, where, what the stairwell would be, you know, where Lula, if you had the story, you know.
Is, so that's what you're proposing to give the selectmen?
Well, I was, I was thinking we would just give dollars, but I brought up a good point that if we give plans, then you can just say, well, thanks or no thanks. But I guess it gets back to the same question. We just don't want to spend money if it's going to be, okay, appreciate it.
You know, I think maybe that's one way to look at it, though, is to find out if they can just give us plans that we accept.
Yeah, it would find out.
Yeah, and they would avoid the whole bidding process over again. Because we're going, you know, he could be forced into another bidding process.
Yeah, well, everybody's so busy right now.
He wouldn't be back anyway, yeah.
Lee, do you have enough information going?
Yeah, I do. I've got your reports and all.
Okay. I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Since we're talking, I just gave, we're still working with an engineer on the wrapper of a wooden structure instead of a steel structure.
That's, I saw the steel still up there.
Yeah.
That's.
There's a lot of weight.
That's a job to get down to after.
Yeah.
We were trying to go, we were trying to go from steel to some sort of wood laminated fix to it. The problem happening is all the beams are various sizes up there, and so you'd have to shim them out substantially before you could do it. And even the steel structures that are up there, several would go right next to the chimneys that are up through the roof, and so the steel that's there wouldn't work in that application either. It has the wrong angle at the end of it, so.
Steel was basically created for the barmaids, not for actual measurements on site. That was another issue.
Not for field measurements, so.
Now you know why.
We're still working, we're still working.
It's got to be worth something to somebody.
As scrap.
Right, but it's a lot of weight, it's got to.
But that steel can be reworked.
Right.
They can be reworked, but we're just, we're trying to avoid going with steel for the additional weight up there.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a great idea.
But we're still working on that, so when we have.
Did you guys hear the bird up in the chimney?
No.
Did you go up there by Saturday? Do you know where the old, what stove is that goes in?
Yeah.
Something's, something flying around in there.
I didn't see it.
It's up there.
Okay. Anyhow, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Take care, Bob.
You too.
Hey, Bob, you're up next.
Yes.
We've got a little note from over here from Amy.
Yes, I was in charge. You've got a little, you've got a Bob Leonard, holiday shore drive. Yes, I reached out to Amy Smabula, who's our contact at DES, and she got back to me, and as you see in the, probably in the email, she didn't do any other water, other water bodies in town, but I did check with our rewatchers who have done a kayak on every other water body, and we've got no mill foil right now in Dunbar, whether it be Gorman Pond or any of the other ponds. So we are, we are clean. That being said, Amy's note also said she might just look for diving next year, so with those funds that are set aside, they'll carry her until next year, if we can easily cover diving and then have, you know, quite a bit.
I'll make a motion of, a motion at the town meeting to move funds.
Yes.
Back into your, at the.
Yeah, there'll be a warrant. Didn't spend this year, go back into that.
That's why it was established like that.
Sure, right, exactly.
We could drop on that for the driving next year without having to maybe add a line for the budget this year.
Sure, okay, yep. We could still use some more help down the ramp as far as inspections, but it's coming to the end anyway. We're going to try to go through September the 15th for boat inspections, but we're not finding anything coming in and out, you know, some dill weed and a few other things, but nothing. And I'm also going to check with fishing game and see if we can maybe get some fish in there, some more fish. Right now, the perch are in there, and the bass fishermen are saying, well, the perch are getting bigger because they're eating the bass eggs, so the bass population's going down, so we'll see if we can get, maybe some stock.
Okay.
Other than that.
How's your yard sales this past week?
Ah, not too good.
Well, it was competing with the old home.
Well, but we did, we did it last year. We've got, we, the person who was put in charge of it, one of the neighbors, isn't local, they're from Massachusetts. They just kind of flew by the seat of the pants, I think we might get 50 bucks or something, I don't know, but I haven't even seen him to ask him, because they're, they have a V and B that they rent out, so they're next to, they're next to us, but there was only five or six yacht sales around. There was one, another yacht sale that they said they were going Saturday or Sunday that wasn't associated with that, but, I mean, the first yacht sale I gave you guys, it was what, 320 bucks or something?
Exactly, yeah.
Not like 60, whatever, no, 120, I think, and now we're probably down to 60. So we talked about it as neighbors, and we're thinking we might hold off a year, maybe do some more chance to.
Do your stuff.
Build up, collect more stuff, yeah. I know for ourselves, we had a 10-foot storage container, we got rid of that, so we can clean it up, I didn't wait for the yard sales.
Very good.
Bill needed it, it's okay, but.
Well, Bob, thank you for coming in and keeping us informed.
Yes.
And no foil, keep it up big.
Yeah, yeah, keep it up big. Well, that two-year treatment, I mean, it was worth it, you know, to do it, because there isn't a sign of it around. We've been all around, including the rewatchers check at the Ella Pond, so that's a good sign that, you know, maybe, we don't see anything, we keep volunteers at the boat ramp, which maybe I'd like to coordinate it next year.
So we'll have to treat that next year for the year after, you think?
No, we might not even have to treat next year.
It depends on the divers.
Do divers depend. It's, it's a matter of how's it going to get in there. It's got to be in by somebody after, say, mid-September that brings a boat in and then It's gotta be in by somebody after, say, mid-September that brings a boat in and then transplants it, as far as I know. And I haven't had a conversation with Amy, I just traded emails, because she even said on her voicemail that I'm very busy this time of year, I'll get back to you as soon as I can, but it could be more than a week. So she at least got back to me with the email and since he leaned, so... But next year, I'd like to try to do a little bit more with the town maybe, and see if I can get the signup changes that I use for people to do boat inspections and just have it out in the town. We can get another couple or three people. I mean, my wife and I down there, sometimes we're doing six out of the eight hours, you know, monitoring the boat ramp. And not looking forward to, not looking forward to doing that, not six hours in a row, but two-hour shifts and that type of thing. And we'll also, you know, get in touch.
Didn't you, a couple years ago, get summer help?
We did have summer help, I hired, I hired somebody from, a girl from boat, Natalie Kaye, and we got a permission slip from her, worked through Liam, and we went through the, uh, uh, the Hatcher Lakes Association, we got permission from her parents. Uh, she's now gone to school, she's going to Boston Polytech. And before she left, she begged me to hire her again next year, she said it was the best job going, so she's already in. So what we might be able to do is, if we get a little bit more money maybe from the state, we'll get her in earlier and then save the last thirty days maybe for just the local residents and fill out a show.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, great. Thank you very much, your time was, and air screen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Is nobody here for a bond, Mike?
No, I am.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. Basically, I just wanna talk about last, um, we got a request from Stinson Hills on email today to release their bond in amount of fifteen thousand dollars plus interest in any outstanding engineer escrow. That's outstanding, it's, could be up to sixteen thousand, but no...
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred more. The road agent last night attested to the fact that they have completed all requirements of the subdivision and the book, and he's authorized, from his point of view, there's no necess, no need to keep the bond. And so I speak on his behalf, and as the selectments are up to the planning board, I make this motion that we require that I release the bond. As soon as it's researched, the exact amount, Liam's gonna determine that.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Both Liam and he'd go ahead and make that, as soon as you get the final, it's just the interest we are determined. Okay, I, as I said, it was an interesting meeting at the planning board last night. One thing, if you remember to recall, we made some specifications for the road improvement, to general road improvements in Dunbar, and we approved that, put some language in there. It was, we got a little pushback from, that's a scenic road, and the conservation committee was a little bit...
No, they were at your meeting, Mike?
Yes.
So you had a meeting and it was in reference to the road?
Absolutely.
So the homeowner does wanna pursue?
The homeowner does wanna pursue it. And so it's, it's determining now the width of the road. And so you can't sit in the meeting determining the width of the road and what trees or what stones have to be removed. So the planning board, in conjunction with the select board, and will do a, and with the road agent, with the fire chief, and possible forum of the planning board and conservation commission, will have a meeting next Tuesday at four P M. We'll do a site visit. It's already been announced, and gentlemen, you two are invited, I'll be there for sure. But we, we get...
Do we have to post it?
It's already posted.
Can I have, did you have a copy of this, Bob, and I, so we can...
Yeah, we can take that one out.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll mark my calendar.
Okay. But it should be interesting, I'm worried about safety, I'm worried about conservation, but the two have to have, come to a happy medium. And I just, there are some interesting conditions already on the road, if you recall, there's a subdivision right when they turn in that was never been developed. And the road was already established, the specifications were wide, similar to the specifications for that road. It's kinda dumb to, it's kinda silly to make it wide and then have it narrow right down. So I wanna, we wanna see what, how, what width can the road withstand and determine, everyone's gonna come to it.
We'll have to bother the stone walls.
Bother the stone walls and taking down trees which are more than, shall I say, picturesque trees.
Right. No, that's the exact process that I knew they would have going to, because it was a scenic road. And that's what, we enlightened them to that break in the beginning.
Believe it or not, the planning board, if, if there's no stone wall removal required and no tree removed, the planning board is more an advisory action than the road improvement, rest of the acts will be our decision. If there's a requirement for road, uh, the stone wall to be moved or larger trees to be moved, the planning board's gonna chime in as an authority and figure to, so it'll be a joint effort.
Yeah, we wanted a recommendation from them so we could act on it, you know?
Is, uh, this, I need, I would recommend we read and hear before we go out there, just to get familiar with it, we all got a copy of it. It's essentially, uh...
We have discontinued highways on the...
Yeah, discontinued highways, and there's a, there's a chapter in there that talks about roads with the, uh...
Scenic.
Scenic roads. Please read that paragraph before we go out. Okay, it'll give you a good understanding of far, as far as who does what in the town when it comes to that. So Liam, thank you for getting the books ready. So that would be your homework before we go out there, make sure you understand where we stand with that, because it's, could be in the planning board or could be exclusively ours, depending upon what has to be done to a road. And the only thing the road agent can do is take out stuff that's of emergent need, if there's a light safety issue, without permission. So I'll leave it at that, this discussion to be determined as far as which we vote. But the owners are definitely wishing to pursue it. And they were very complimentary of Donna White as the advisor and helping them through the process, so I thought, kudos to Donna White for her efforts there. All right, that was one. Now I have another, another item came up, I think is, uh, there's a, the Perkins, Mr. Perkins in town, they did a lot line adjustment, he's building a home and he did a lot line adjustment, and the deed has not been recorded yet. He's running out of time, and the planning board made, it was a motion to accept a thousand dollar bond from Ken Perkins in lieu of accepting deeds prior to issuing a building permit. So they were waiting on, on the deeds before they issued building permit. And the town is in the past, they've been burnt on that in the sense that the action is not always done. You know, they issued building permit and the deeds are never filed. And so they're asked for a bond, and I don't, I don't know, gentlemen, I used mine myself as an example, I said, everyone, a few people that boy knew of him, so at least trustworthy, trustworthy, I said, we can't do it on based upon trust. So the bond is, we're gonna basically, we're accepting a bond on him so he can continue with his building permits, get the foundation in, start the building process, so the process will end this year. He's, he's got a bond outstanding, he's filling the file of deeds, and that's in his building work as far as getting his lawyer to get together and file the deeds.
So just to touch on that, this was a lot line adjustment that moved a very minimal, minimal amount of square feet from one lot to the other lot, so it actually was an equivalent swap. And so in order to clean the, the lot, so the maps will reflect what's on a deed, the deed needs to be recorded with the plan. So the plan will be recorded, but you still also have to follow up with the deeds, and he was not aware that...
I'm in the same position online.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
Which the deeds don't actually take that much time, they probably take less time than to total that up.
Yeah, but the thing is, he has, he's, he's cleared the lot, he says he has construction people standing by, without building permits, he can't move an inch. And the fact that he's doing it by the book is kind of, it's a pleasant surprise that he's doing it by trying to...
I wrote Bob in the book.
Okay. I don't believe we have to do a motion, except, in fact, let's pick a motion to accept a thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah, you could do that.
Then I can make a motion, we accept a thousand dollars for the purposes of establishing a bond escrow fund with Mr. Perkins to the completion, to accept the amount of thousand dollars from Ken Perkins in lieu of accepting deeds prior to issuing the building permit.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Okay, Liam, are you gonna take here that?
Can I have a favor, I want you to look at...
No, I wanted to vote, just gonna vote. Okay. All right, this is just an FYI, I want you all to read this, if you recall, we had the state, this is another inquiry that we're pursuing, this is more with the building department. Remember the, we had a trailer in town, and there was a resident putting up a, a friend in a trailer. Mike made his visit, he still has to con, he has to review the report and get in touch with the state to see what the next step is. This is just an FYI, so we know, we keep an informed going on.
One thing in reference to that, I read there, there are notes on their state's previous thing there, and they said that if somebody was living there, whether there was a water line out to that trailer or not, then they'd have to do a drawing for a replacement septic system, basically. When you have lots over five acres, the state waves any septic systems drawings. So he's pointing out a rule, or the state is pointing out a rule, but because, I think it might be an eleven-acre lot over there, it's a pretty large lot.
It is, yeah.
It's gonna be waived anyway, so the next step, to me, we gotta make sure Donna's aware of that as well.
Communicate that.
They don't really have to draw a, a replacement area for a four-k septic system because it's waived by the state's own regulations.
You know, this is kind of odd, because it's like having a guest at the house, and you use a trailer as, as the guest facility, and to have them replace a something, the state asked them for a replacement septic system. I just think we're over, the state is pushing it...
What they do is they make you mark out a four-k area where you could put a potential new septic system. If your other one failed. Well, for one thing, you can put it in the same area if you dredge it out. But for two, when it's a large lot, that gets waived on every one of our subdivision regulations as we go through planning and do these lots, so...
I, I really think the state's pushing them, would you say, agree with me?
That's what I would think, too.
And so I think, I'm gonna, I think this is just information only, we just gonna let Mike take a look at that and, uh...
But I'll remind them of that waiver option. I'm sure they're familiar with it, they both have subject designs in the background.
Mike is wearing the hat of the health inspector here.
Well, there is no wastewater going, so...
No, it's an extra bedroom, that's what we're asking, it's a temporary, extra bed, temporary attached, it's been driven off. So that's information only.
Yeah, so I think maybe we'll provide this to the state as they've asked us to do, and then we'll maybe give them that other note, reference to the septic system.
Okay. Continuing on. I got a memo from Tom, Tom, Karen Frisano, is, uh, just as an example of some of the good work they did at the old home day, the food tent. And basically, essentially, they, the money, they have an intake of seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, thirty cents, with a total food purchase of seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. So essentially, what they sold...
I was gonna ask...
Is that, it came up, and no cost, so it was great, so...
But I was, I was there and I was amazed how cheap you could buy a hamburger or a hot dog for. In fact, I think I gave him a twenty, I didn't realize a hot dog's fifty cents. You can't buy a hot dog anywhere for a hamburger for a dollar fifty.
That was a great idea that they came up with.
Four a pound is for a dollar fifty, dollar fifty.
Prices.
Yeah. He's got a, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just say for the record that, I think is, that Tom's already got a new idea up his sleeve for next year, making it even more interesting.
They need more burgers, they ran out.
But he's gonna do something, he wants to do something very special for the Dunbar residents.
Can I ask you a question on these hearty beef burger prices?
Great, Dave.
Did, did this purchase include the ice cream?
No, there's that invoice that we paid.
Okay, so we do pay that as a...
Under their, yes, under their, um, budget, that's what, that was one item they chose to do.
Okay.
During the event.
And so they wanna continue doing this, and no, you ain't no one.
It was the old home, that, that whole food tent this year was done with all volunteers, it was not part, in the past, it'd been the garden club this year, they decided to step back and not participate, but they got a lot of those members to volunteer, and they did exactly that, they came up with the idea to...
I think it's great, I just don't know how many years you can get that volunteers to man it all.
Yeah.
But it worked out well.
It worked out very well. Everyone was pleasant, food was great.
Okay, continuing on. I have a Primex, we have a, I don't wanna make a motion on this, this week, I'll make a defer motion to next time, I want you all to read this, but essentially, we're signing up for a three-year contract with them, and we'll have stable prices over the next three years for some of our insurance...
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Yeah.
But it stabilizes some of our costs, and I think it's, I think we, the need, you can't really digest it now, but please read that this week, and we can make a vote on that next time.
We actually, it's due by September twenty-seventh, they'd like a response back.
Can I just ask you, do we always do three years?
This is like the third time we've entered into this, and the prior insurance company also gave us the option for like a two or three year.
Nine percent.
So there's some details you probably need to look at. All right, also in the inbox, this is, I think this is from last week, but I'll just, obviously, the roof, firehouse roof repairs and water progress.
Yep.
I, have you seen any, we haven't put any money into that?
No, he was saying that he was hoping to get that project started end of August, first week of September, so that's coming up.
Okay.
Could see some work, and I C C John on that, so he's working to, he's communicating with John to be able to get into the building, he needs to.
Gentlemen, this is just a Primex report of injury, we had a police officer injured during training, just a minor injury, but it was injured, and we request a Primex report, FYI, I believe the names aren't known. Okay, Primex also did a, uh, a site evaluation of the road agents' facilities, and there were a couple small disconnects that had been addressed.
He did point out that in, in all of the municipalities, and he said to inspectors, if one of ours were right up at the top as far as being in good condition and meeting all the criteria, there's only one recommendation in there though.
I guess good paint covers everything, huh, Bob? No, the thing is, poor Jeff, he's been deferring painting that building for eight years, remember?
Yeah.
And we finally, we finally made it happen this last year. Okay. This is just information on... Liam is doing some research on, uh, other roads in town, make sure it has to be scenic roads and road widths, that's gonna be the issue for next Tuesday. Issues, leave that stuff in the inbox if you wanna make reference to it. But there's, there was an issue with Dowdville Road, and again, a discussion on the road width. That's information in there. Dave, all set?
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay.
Give two cents a minute, let's see what we all say.
Yep. Okay, I'm gonna take a moment and open up the public comment.
Matt?
Please, come on up.
Thank you for letting me squeak in at the last minute.
This is a town clerk, Linda.
Yes, this is town clerk, Linda. Last week, I attended my recertification class, and just to give you a little background, it's a recertification, there's a certification class that's a program that's put on jointly by the town clerk association and the tax collector association. So the program is, you attend one week a year for four years to get your initial certification. The classes are a range of, they cover your technical skills like elections and tow their vehicles, the things we normally do, plus there's other courses to enhance professional development, human relations, also general education, brush-ups from high school, things that we need to make us the professionals we strive to be. So I completed my certification several years ago, to maintain your certification, town clerk must attend the annual conference or the workshops, which I do every year, and once every five years, you have to go for recertification. It was scheduled to go last year, but as you know, I, I got short-staffed very quickly and very abruptly and couldn't attend, so they let me extend to this year to recert. I attended my class, I've got my certificate, my five.
Congratulations.
Under refrigerator. And my test was solely on elections, so I want you to know that I got a ninety-four, a hundred, and, uh, recognized for my election knowledge, Fred already applauded me, it's his fault I have, I do so well in that, because all the years he worked with me. Well, you know what, I was mad that I didn't get a hundred, but in my defense, I must say that five of those questions had to do with ballot counting devices, and I didn't know how to answer them, so...
Does not, does not apply.
Does not, and, and, and does not apply, uh, does not apply in the test. So that, I just wanted to update you on that, I will probably be budgeting to start sending hope there, as it is a short-year program to get started, so...
How's your plan?
That was it.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, it was a rough test.
And for the record, I just wanna say, I saw our husband this afternoon, when I came in, he's looking, looking at better his papers, and I'm glad he's doing better.
Thanks, me too, oh, me too. Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And for the record, for the record, I don't wanna be details, husband had a tragic injury early this year of, uh, I won't go into the details, but the thing is, they laid him up for about a month or two, and he's back, I'd say he's on the meds. Okay, Fred, anything else for us?
No.
Okay, I'll bring him back to the board, I'll start with Dave, go ahead.
Well, I just wanna say I was at home day with my granddaughter, and it was a delightful time, there was a lot of people having good fun, and we served ice cream to, I don't know, probably a hundred fifty people, and it was fun, I'm glad I made it there.
The thing is, you didn't have to put her to work, though.
She, she loved working there.
You put, the grand, the granddaughter actually helped with the dishes and addition on ice cream, but she did a very good job, she kept me, kept me busy.
Oh, yeah, she liked that. But no, it was good, I don't think I have anything else to update on, I did come, when they did the inspection of the roof tiles over at the town hall slash library, I did make it to that meeting, and I saw Bob Martel there, and, uh... We went around the building and reviewed how they hold the last few slate that they put on the roof are held on by copper wires that are hooked onto copper nails up underneath the previous slate. And with the ice and snow sliding off that roof, because it's so slippery, their thought is that some of those have opened up, allowing the slate to slide out, so they re-bent them and cocked them down as they were rolling.
Okay, so it's been prepared.
So they did a repair while they were there, although they did not see any slate missing. So whether they left a piece up there or not, we don't know, but I went around and did a visual inspection and showed them the spots I thought they were missing, but...
Did you go up in the lifting?
No, they, they, the insurance wouldn't require us to go up. Too heavy, no. You really got halfway, just there, both of us wrong. So anyway, they, they did do some repair to the roof and they inspected it, and I think that portion is taken care of for now.
Okay, to, to me, remove the signs.
I wouldn't, you know, I'll be honest, leave them up till next spring, so that you can tell this winter if anything happens, because we don't know where they came from. They really, that was speculation as far as the worker was concerned.
Yeah.
So the best bet is, people are gonna at least be aware, so they're watching a little bit, versus just going in willy-nilly and...
Liam, could you have, ask her to, uh, library director to laminate those signs so they can be weatherproof and leave up them from, I think they're not weatherproof, that's a problem.
Now, do you think, since we've had a, the professional company come back and look at it and repair whatever faults they found, we should take it down and have it complete? Because it does have the falling snow and ice danger sign there anyway. I just thought they've repaired the liability to the town until we have another issue.
Yeah, but it's falling ice and snow versus, I mean, this time of year, I, we don't, we don't know, you know?
I could see if we hadn't had it inspected to leave it up, but now that we've left, have had it inspected by the professionals, I think the liability has gone from the town at that point, so I don't think we should... If we leave it up, it's like we think that it's gonna fail again, and I don't think we should...
You know, I, I look at it just as a precaution till, and, you know, with next spring coming, if you see nothing from the wintertime and nothing till then, chances are you go forward with nothing happening, but...
I'm thinking of it, I'm thinking of it this way.
The rest of the board, I have to tell you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on the side of caution, but it's whatever you, whatever the board decides to do.
Well, that's what I'm thinking of, if you leave that there, and say something does happen, the people are gonna say you knowingly and willingly allowed us to go around a building that had that fault, where we actually just had that building repaired. And so I, I think it could get us into a liability situation, but I think I would...
I think, I think you're more liable if someone ends up going in and a piece of slate does fall versus at least pre-warning them. But again-
What is the sign saying?
I'm going to err to the side of caution, so.
What's the sign?
All it says is something about to be aware that there's a possibility of a falling slate, you know, a falling slate tile. I don't know exactly what the signs is, but it's making you aware.
Another we've had is fixed, I don't think we should leave it there. So I'm just, if, if our insurance company were to know that we were leaving that there like if they walked around.
It's okay. He's in the middle of this.
I'm just thinking of, if our insurance company came here like our, our building insurer and they saw that sign, they'd come all and question us about, why do you have that there? Well, we did just have it fixed, but we wanted to leave it there, doesn't, doesn't-
In, in the event of, you know, like I say, I'm going to err on the side of caution. I've been on heavy construction for a long time and sometimes something happens that you never expect would happen and you might think it's something safe. Geez, you know, when they did the school up the north end of Manchester, that was hobby construction and everybody thought the floor was safe when it came down and it trapped four guys under a concrete slab. So you never know, things look safe and things happen. So I'd rather err on the side of caution and see what happens, but I don't mind putting somebody in the middle.
I'm going to give you another example since you-
One more, that's it.
On construction, when you're building the building, you wear a hard hat going in and out of the building and on the site. When the building is done, you don't wear the hard hat anymore. You know, it's like leaving a sign up there.
You do if you're still working on the site.
We're not working on the site. All right. So now it's up to you, Mike.
I'm going to compromise. I'd like to leave it up to the library after March, next, after the snow, after the snow ice season. And then we'll take them down this year. If there's, we have seen no evidence, then by next spring, after the winter, we take them down.
All right, if our insurance drops us, you guys are at blame.
I, I don't think you're going to have that case.
But the thing is, I still, I, the signs, I can see someone was just leaning against the building. I can see them laminated at least and just put in the ground. Okay? With the, with the, with the option-
Yeah, because right now it covers up the other one for the winter.
Yeah, and we just, we just, for now, we just monitor it. And in springtime, we see no evidence as we walk around the building in spring, they come immediately down.
Well, you know, I'll tell you what, I'll go one step further. I may leave them up until it starts snowing. And then she can take them off because that other sign is going to say it served the same purpose of the ice and snow coming up the building. And I think that settles it for both sides. I mean, I know where you're coming from.
Yeah, I just don't want us to, I don't want to open a liability issue with our insurance company when we've had it.
Acceptable?
Yeah.
Acceptable, census?
Until snow flies, okay.
Until snow flies and then she can take them down and then-
He did a terrible job settling this, didn't he?
You're in the chair.
That was settled.
We had to settle it ourselves.
I get you talking, get you guys talking, that's all. Put your sign this way over here. Dave is still in your place. Anything else? Nope. Bob, to you.
Okay, well, I'm going to bring up the speed with, at the transfer station with the solar project. I know Woody gave you a brief one, but just because David mentioned something about the pile of rocks that were around.
Yeah.
Actually, Dana and Grant State Solar have talked with Woody because that can be used. Woody's found a spot where it's beneficial for him to use that as some kind of a berm. And they may even add other stones that they pick up to, to do that. They're going to level a piece in the back for Woody when he is, you know, changing those, the containers because he needs a level surface. So with their Bobcat, they'll make sure they give him a level service, uh, ser- surface where he needs it. And they're about two weeks away from getting the panels to put up, what I understand. And the conservative estimate is probably, they're probably going to produce more electricity than the conservative estimate is given them, so. That's, you know, that's-
Well, why haven't been down there this week, but are all them ones laying right where on the roadway there?
What's that?
Are all them rocks still laying right where?
Yeah, they're there, but they're going to, when they get done with the panels, they're taking all those stones and Woody's got a spot that he's using it-
So they're going to clean it up.
So they're going to clean it all up. So I think that's going to all get addressed for-
I just didn't want them to leave all that for Woody to have to do because it doesn't make any sense.
No, I think they, it sounded like they were working with Woody and-
Right, they are working with Woody. They, you know, they, they decided how, what, where they were going to use it and everything. So they'll have that all cleaned up. And the only other thing, and I'm going to bring it up again, because Wednesday's a school day. There's a kid that's going to walk down that road and almost five months ago, we approved putting a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign. I don't think it takes almost five months to get a sign from the state of New Hampshire. I understand Jeff's busy. Those are minimal amount of hours to put a sign up on each end.
Do we have a sign though?
We don't have a sign yet.
We don't?
And so I'd like to see a sign go up sooner than later because it's getting, it's dragging. And, you know, I know it's not much, but again, but there's, the kid, evidently when the people see him walking, has a cell phone, you know, the iPhone in his hand and he's busy looking at that and he's not looking where he's going. And I got to tell you, the cars do move pretty quick around that corner and it narrows quick. So I, you know, it's a potential of something.
When was the last time you talked road agent in your gardens?
Friday, last Friday.
Nothing yet.
I asked, has, is the sign in and he replied, no. So he's aware that I'm following up with it is just here.
I mean, and I understand, but let's face it, almost five months. You know, you see signs go in, in other communities on roads and we didn't have that long a wait to get them, so. I just want to bring it to the forefront so he knows that there's somebody who's going to keep nagging them till this sign goes up.
Anything else, Bob?
Yeah, I'll, I'll rest with that.
Okay, thanks.
A little work on the roof, Bob.
What?
Work on the roof.
All right, I'm going to go to town minister.
I have just one item for the board. I forward, ICC you in an email to the Board of Assessors regarding the appeals for the utilities. And the recommendation from our utility praiser is that he either meets with the board or does a teleconference. The Board of Assessors do want me to schedule that for their September meeting and that is on Tuesday, the seventeenth. And based on the last conference we had, you guys participated, so-
Tuesday, the seventeenth of?
September.
September?
Yeah.
Do you have a good time?
They, they start at seven PM, so I'll try to book and if I, it's still fairly early, so I think we can probably get that time slot for the seven o'clock. But if there's any change, I'll definitely let you know. So if you can mark your calendar that there'll be a non-public with the Board of Assessors and the Board of Assessors to discuss the appeals of the utilities.
And there'll be a text on that day?
Yeah.
There'll be, there will be a telephone conference though, right?
Telephone conference, yeah.
Will you be serving coffee? Because I don't date my woman. I could use that right now. I'll go get a Dunkin' Donuts in town any day.
Okay, I, I have nothing, gentlemen, for now. And I'm waiting for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Seven fifty-eight.
I'll second Bob's motion. I'm feeling kind with him tonight.
So be it, we are closed.